And anyone want to make a motion regarding the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the approval of minutes. Anybody have any changes? I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the appointment of the vice chair person.
On August 30th, 2021, Wanda McLaurin was appointed by city council to fill the city council vacancy. Therefore, she will no longer be the chair for the commission. Per Planning Commission policy, vice chair Glenn Terry becomes the chair for the remainder of 2021. The commission will need to appoint a vice chair. The recommendation is that the commission is requested to appoint a vice chair for the remainder of 2021.
Anybody interested in that position first off?
Mr. Chair, I know that Sharon is not able to be here tonight, but I did speak with her about this, and she is willing to accept the appointment of vice chair.
Terrific.
So I would make a motion to appoint Sharon Johnson as vice chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and Sharon is our new vice chair.
I did, really, I did talk to her.
We have, for our next item, there were three candidates for two vacancies. Now we have two candidates. So I don't think we need to interview them because we're familiar with both of them, and I would vouch for both of them. But I would like to, prior to making a formal motion on that, I'd like to invite Wanda McLaurin to say a few words regarding her vacating the premises.
Well, not entirely.
Not exactly.
Come on, Glenn, I don't want to have to leave the building yet. I just want to say that it's been an honor to serve with all of you. We've had a lot of challenges, we've done a lot of things, and I'm so proud of the work that we've done during that time. And I hope I can continue to do that, sitting on city council. And I know that you guys will continue to follow through. And with the two new members, I also would vouch for both of those members. I think you're going to have a very, very, very strong commission going forward. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wanda.
Thanks for your service. I'm going to make a motion to accept Tanner Belfany and Karen Creppis as the two new planning and zoning members to fill the vacancies.
We do need to appoint them to the specific vacancies. There's one commission that ends on January 31st of 2023, and the other ends on January 31st of 2024.
So they don't start fresh with, okay? So that's interesting.
If you guys would like to, on your ballots in front of you, there's a pen and a slip of paper. If you want to just put one for the 2023 and a two for the 2024, and then write their names in, I can collect the ballots and we can take care of it that way.
Could we ask each of them just to come to the podium and just make a short little statement about why they want to be on the commission so that everybody knows who they are? We know who they are, but everybody else may not. So just something really quick?
That's fine. I'll go.
My name is Tanner Belfany, I'm at 19534 East Front Boulevard. Any, I guess, history for those who don't know. I've been serving on the planning and zoning up until the end of 2019, when I moved out of the city for a short period of time, and then recently moved back somehow onto the same street. Today's weird market, go figure. But my history, I think, shows that I've always been for helping progress the city, to grow in the areas that I think are necessary and appropriate to grow while still maintaining our rural feel right off the main corridor. I don't think I've ever made that. I think I've always made that a pretty well-known statement, that that was always my position. And outside of that, I'd like to think I've always looked openly and fairly at any situations that came before us. Just a little bit of also history, again, you know, coming in at the end of the 2030 comp plan, starting in the beginning of the 2040, I wasn't here for the final execution of it, but I think I was here for a pretty big bulk of it. So pretty familiar with what's out there, as well as the issues facing the city currently, and look forward to continuing to help, and I appreciate the consideration and the motion. And again, I yield no reason to not be on short or long term, so, as far as the 23, 24. So however you want to vote that. Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Creppis, 23050 Gulf Drive Northeast. I've been a resident of East Bethel for about 20 years, and I think, like a lot of folks, moved here because I love the rural character. And yet, the time I've lived here, just getting involved with citizens, when CST wanted to come in, it was really important to learn about the role of the Planning Commission and the balancing that takes place with our zoning and ordinances. And there is an important balance between residents and businesses. And so I do appreciate all that you do, and I've learned a lot over the years. And I think just getting more involved and participating, attending meetings, I've never been afraid to speak up at public forums on issues that are important to me. And it's kind of nice to see that there's a big group here, so there's some important things that matter to them. And I just want to thank you for your consideration. I look forward to be parting the Planning Commission. I know that you are a wonderful team, and you make decisions that impact people's lives. And that's not to be taken lightly, so there's a lot of information that you've looked at, in fact. And even though I'm not intimately familiar with zoning and ordinances, I know that I can follow up on them. I know we've got wonderful staff on hand to answer questions if I need. So just thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item is a request for a variance regarding a front yard fence height. And this is a public hearing.
This is for 2246 Viking Boulevard for a front yard fence height variance for Dan Forzlin. The request is that we, or that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider the request for the construction of a six-foot fence along the front property line on a property zoned rural residential. This property is located in the rural residential zoning district. This application was made due to the building official notifying the property owner that the fence he was in the process of installing was an ordinance violation. Zoning Appendix A, Section 25 to C states, "Fences six feet in height and less, fences six feet in height and less may be placed anywhere on a lot, but not in a required front yard." There are 160 properties that abut Viking Boulevard to the east of Highway 65 in the city of East Bethel. Of those 160 properties, there are four with six-foot fences along Viking Boulevard. Three of those six-foot fences are located on the rear property line of a property they are surrounding. The remaining six-foot fence is along Viking Boulevard, or that is along Viking Boulevard, is a legal non-conforming fence and was installed before the adoption of the fence ordinance in 2010. The property with the legal non-conforming fence is also located within the Mixhues District, as well as the 2040 municipal service area. On August 26th of 2019, city council denied a request for a six-foot fence variance in a front yard along County Road 74 on the basis that while the applicant was requesting a chain-link fence, in that case, it could be replaced with a privacy fence down the road, which would hide code of violations. The city council minutes for that request can be reviewed in Attachment 3. The fence that that applicant was, or the fence that this applicant has installed is a privacy fence. The consideration of a variance requires the Planning Commission to consider the three-factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor is reasonableness. The property owner's submission was, "We believe it is reasonable to want a six-foot fence across our front yard. Viking Boulevard has increased, or has grown increasingly busy with traffic and subsequent noise. We would like to try to block some of that noise, as well as offering us more privacy and security." The staff response is that, "While offense is a reasonable use, we were not provided information that a six-foot fence would reduce the noise to a substantially higher level than that of a four-foot fence. Additionally, trees and other landscaping to screen is allowed by ordinance to be taller than fence construction, which is also addressed in the fence ordinance." The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property. The property owner's submission is, "In the 31 years that we've lived in our home, Viking Boulevard traffic and noise have increased to the point that it is like living on a highway rather than a country road, and that's something, that is something over which we have no control." The staff response is that noise is an issue faced by all of the properties along Viking Boulevard. The majority of other properties along Viking Boulevard have utilized trees and plantings to mitigate the noise of traffic. The third factor is that a variance would not alter the essential characteristic of this neighborhood. The property owner's submission is, "The fence will be within our property boundaries, and will give an aesthetically pleasing look to our home and property." Staff response is, "The placement of a six-foot vinyl fence will alter the character of the neighborhood. The four-foot maximum was established to combat code compliance issues that are encouraged by the allowance of six-foot fences in front yards. There would likely be more substantial requests for additional variances from the fence height requirement along the Viking Boulevard if this request is approved." City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council for the construction of a six-foot fence along the front property line of a rural residential property along Viking Boulevard. This is a photo of the fence in question.
Right, thank you. This is a public hearing, and at this point, I would like to open the public hearing. And if you have anything to say to address this issue, please come in the microphone and begin with stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dan Forzlin, landowner. I'm at fault for starting without interpreting the whole language that was set forth for me because the first stated line was, "You can put a six-foot anywhere on your property." Which, I thought my front yard was my property, therefore I thought, okay, that's good to go. And then I didn't understand the last part about, what does it say there? For the front yard? Let's see, it's in here somewhere. What did you see? You got that?
It is the required front yard requirement.
Yeah, what I took that to mean is you didn't have to continue a six-foot fence in your front yard if you had it in the backyard. I think some terminology could be set there to kind of set people straight. Hey, only four feet to front, only six feet. That's why I started, okay? As you can tell, it's an appealing fence, it's expensive fence and stuff. Our main thing is the noise, and everybody knows, you know, Viking has just gone nuts, you know, over the years and stuff. And they put the cement in, which the tires howl off that thing even more. So we're trying to get that, just so we can have the doors open and hear the TV. Our house sits a little closer to the road. And I know it's not going to block all the noise. It's not going to block the Harleys going by and stuff like that, but it's going to dampen something. And it says something here, "You didn't think a four-foot and a six-foot would make a difference?" I disagree. The other thing is, it's a security thing. How much traffic goes by my house? And I have all my equipment out, all my motorcycles, my snowmobiles, tools and stuff like that. I don't like advertising. Crime rates up. I just don't want everybody to see everything I have, so that part's good. I got all my neighbors asking me when I'm going to finish the fence. It looks great. I say, "Well, we got a few issues, so we're trying to get that straightened away here." You know, you read that maybe the other options would be trees. So if I plant 40 pine trees, how long before they grow up and be effective? This right now is effective, and I've lived with it for 30-some years. And I want to do something now. I want it to be done and done now, you know? Other option, landscaping? Are you telling me I can build a six-foot retaining wall up front? I don't know, does anybody know anything about that part of it? I mean, it said you can put trees and other landscaping.
That would refer to vegetation.
You know?
Rather than architectural features.
Okay.
So that would be shorter shrubs, things like that. So trees are separate from shrubs or bushes. So that's, the all-encompassing term is landscaping, for those shorter plants.
Am I able to mound up like you see in the leather part, and then put a four-foot fence on top of that?
No, because that does not grow.
But it'll be four feet off the ground that I've landscaped up in the front yard?
Landscaping refers to vegetation rather than dirt.
Okay. All right, I just want to try to do this right. I got a third of it up, I don't know how this is going to turn out. I hope we can get this figured out. Any questions from me, from anybody?
That would be...
Is there any reaction about the fence here?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue from the public?
Appreciate it, thank you.
If not, we'll close the public hearing. Still, I mean, any comments?
I think the problem that we're looking at, I truly, personally, myself, yeah, the fence looks nice, but I think it does open up precedence for multiple different types of fence. This is a PVC, probably has one of 25, 30-year appearance or warranty, and it'll look good. However, if we open up that door, then we have, you know, cedar siding fences and any other type of fence six-foot high that, you know, doesn't get maintained as nicely as others do. So I think that's why, you know, I know what 22 is like. I've lived out here for probably 45, 45 years. You're right, it's changed. At like 694 Highway 10, you're not going to stop it. It's only going to get worse. And a six-foot fence, it may calm down the noise, may give you a little bit of protection and privacy, but in my mind, those two things are kind of compromised just because of the highway, County Road 22. That's my take on it.
I agree. A six-foot fence isn't going to make that much difference down the road. Or now, I think you're right, the vegetation, the hedges, something would do more.
Actually, for me, the issue is the meeting the requirements of a variance. We have a code in place that stipulates four-foot fence on the front yard as a maximum. So in order to grant a variance, there has to be just cause based on the criteria that were outlined. And I think staff has made a convincing case as to why, in this request, it doesn't fit those legal definitions of what would fall under reason to grant a variance? Yeah, you may.
What is the purpose of a variance?
A variance is to request something that is not normally permitted by code, but circumstances of a property are unique and/or there's a specific hardship. For example, somebody wants to put a garage somewhere, and the only space they have is a certain spot because otherwise they're coaching on setbacks, they're coaching on the well on the property, so...
So it changes your code?
It doesn't change the code. It changes, it adapts to the uniqueness of a property circumstance.
And this does too?
You're making, you're trying to make a case that it does, but it hasn't been a convincing one for staff, and I don't really... You're making a reason why you want the fence, but not why a variance would be granted as a unique situation on your property. So what would end up happening if we were to grant that is anyone else could use the same conditions. They live on 22. We want to block noise, so we should be able to build a six-foot fence.
Okay, that's Anoka County, right? Considered highway?
22 is Anoka County Road, yes.
So would it ever get pushed to have retaining walls, silent walls put up there, like you do along freeways? Block the noise?
So you're just trying to find ways to get around the issue rather than do what is reasonable and allowed, such as plant trees or plant shrubs?
How long would trees take to grow before they would block the noise out? I should have planted them when I moved in the first day. They're going to take quite a while.
The public hearing is closed.
Right, so I granted you some more time outside of our public hearing to speak your mind, but we're not having a debate. We've considered your issue. We haven't voted yet or made a motion, but we will do that shortly. But I'm not here to solve your issues, but to grant or not grant a variance. And it's not even, we're an advisory board, so it's going before council after us. But we have to consider the legal requirements for a variance. And that's the main consideration here.
So this wasn't really a request for a variance? What I mean, this wasn't a hearing for, this was just a hearing to say, no?
You have an opportunity to present your case. If neighbors wanted to speak about it, they have the opportunity to speak, which no one did. And we review the information that we've been given, and we make a decision.
Well, I got fencing up, I'm not sure what I'm going to do with it. I mean, I don't know what you expect me to do. What do you want to tell them?
Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we deny the request for the variance to place a six-foot fence along the front property based on the findings as stated in our packet and by staff.
Is there a second? There's a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? A variance request denied. Does that go to council still?
October 11th.
October 11th, it will go in front of council? Next item is a public hearing request for a private kennel license by Tammy Gimble. And prior to beginning that process, I feel compelled to make a statement based on past history with this applicant and responses that we've had. The dictate, "Love thy neighbor as thyself" is a tough one to follow. And the wisdom of "Bare no false witness" is an understanding of human nature, given that the first one is a tough one. What I don't want to have happen here is quite the opposite of these things, which is a vendetta, slander, gossip. You have, everyone has the right to speak, but you don't have the right to bear false witness in trying to make your case. So if it goes in that direction, I will be cutting it short in the interests of time and the interest of not making negative karma, so to speak. So with that, let us proceed.
Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission consider a recommendation of, or that, no, or that Planning Commission hold a public hearing and then consider a recommendation of approval of a private kennel license for the keeping of up to 10 dogs over the age of four months on property address 22359 Baton Street Northeast. Tammy Gimble has held an IUP for the keeping of 10 dogs over the age of four months on her property located at 22359 Baton Street since 2002. Due to recent events, the city attorney reviewed the applicant's previous IUPs, as well as the dog ordinance. It has been determined that a private kennel license is separate from IUPs, as well as the only instance in which an IUP should be issued for kennels is for a commercial kennel. Commercial kennels are allowed in the commercial and industrial districts. With this clarification, the city will move forward with a private kennel license as a separate license, not as an interim use permit. Tammy Gimble has three active IUPs with the city of East Bethel. The most recent IUP issued was for the keeping of two horses, and the other two issued IUPs are for home occupations. The home occupation IUPs are for the distribution of pet food and an animal control business of gratitude farms through which she contracts services to other cities. These home occupation IUPs expire on December 31st, 2021, in which the applicant has already applied for the renewal of the IUPs. Her property is routinely inspected by the Minnesota Board of Animal Health, as is required by state law. And annual inspections have been completed by appointed city inspectors. That was purely informational, as this particular agenda item is only for the issuance of the private kennel license. This property is 26.51 acres with wetlands and ponds. Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 2 of city code governs kennel licenses, and the ordinance states that the maximum number of dogs allowed with a private kennel is determined by the number of acres. In the case of this property, it made Subpart 4, which specifies that properties with 10 acres or more, a maximum of 10 dogs may be allowed. This private kennel license is separate from her home occupation for animal control officer and is only for the keeping of her personal dogs. The city has not received any code enforcement complaints regarding the keeping of Mrs. Gimble's dogs, nor any verifiable code enforcement complaints regarding this property in general since the first issuance of the kennel IUP in 2002. City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the private kennel license and make recommendation to city council for the private kennel license for the keeping of 10 dogs over the age of four months at 22359 Baton Street Northeast. PIN number 0333-2331-0004 and 0333-2331-0003. A property zoned rural residential with the following conditions set forth in the attached resolution. One, the applicant must comply with City Code Section 10, Article 2, dogs. Housing enclosures shall be located as not to create a nuisance and shall not approach upon any setback area. Dogs should be confined to their own property by approvable means. Housing and shelter must be provided, which will keep animals comfortable and protected by the elements. Accumulations of feces shall be located at least 200 feet from any well. All accumulations of feces shall be removed at such periods as will ensure no leeching or objectionable odors exist, and the premises shall not be allowed to become unsightly. All dogs shall have access to indoor housing from the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The city council reserves the right to issue additional conditions on a case-by-case basis in order to maintain the public repose. Kennels should be considered an accessory structure for setback purposes. Condition two is the license, this shall expire December 31st of 2024. Condition three is the property owner shall have their... Condition three is the property owner shall have thirty days to remove the approved dogs upon expiration of the IUP. And condition four, the property may be inspected and evaluated annually by city staff.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing and again remind you to state your name and address for the record. To the microphone, please.
Kenneth Henrickson. I live right next door to her, two-two-three-oh-nine. I've been there for seventy years. I've never had any issues with her. A lot of other people have, I've heard. But she's got a few dogs and a few horses, I'm fine with that. But when it comes to ten dogs, is ten dogs, ten dogs, or it can be fifteen or twenty dogs? Is it for boarding, or is it for breeding, or both? I wonder, did you say that?
These are just specifically her personal dogs, which she does breed one litter a year.
I thought maybe she'd be here to answer the question better. Let's see, what else was there? Yeah, and then as far as keeping it healthy and clean, are people allowed in there to check, you know, periodically without a warrant? Are they gonna get kicked off with?
The city staff has always just contacted Tammy to schedule an inspection, and she's always been very upfront and friendly with us to schedule those. We've never had an issue.
Yeah, otherwise, I don't, I don't trust her, but I don't have any real issues.
Anyone else? Now that I've closed the public hearing. Any comments on the commission?
Sounds like she's doing everything she should be doing, so I have no issues.
She has a proper acreage. The way I look at it is, is I, I know it's been blasted all over, every probably social media, far more than I'm aware of, I don't pay attention to it too much. In my eyes, I don't know that she's been ever convicted of anything. Again, she has the right acreage. One neighbor has come forward to give their opinion. I would assume that, my impersonation of that is it's not for, not against her having dogs. I think people are entitled to have pets, as long as they're not a nuisance to somebody else or bothering somebody else. There's a note in this, in this booklet that states that the state has been out to inspect. Well, if our state can't inspect and find anything wrong, then I don't know that I should hold anything against her. So in my mind, I think she's following the guidelines, and I think I'm in favor of it.
I think that there's been a certain amount of talk, as you referenced, Tom, and I'd like to thank city staff for fielding the concerns that have been presented directly to them as they have been able to answer any concerns that I have seen very well.
I'd also like to point out that she, the applicant does animal control for the city and I think others places as well, perhaps. So you don't get to do that without exhibiting a level of responsibility and understanding of how to work with animals. So I think that speaks well for what she's doing. And I'm right, she has acreage, there's no general complaint from neighbors about the thing, so it all looks positive to me. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the IUP for the keeping of ten dogs on her property as a private kennel with all the staff recommendations applied.
Second.
It's, it's not an IUP, it's a private kennel as a separate application now?
Oh, right, she's held the IUP, right, sorry about that. So I would make a motion, or adjust my motion to approve a private kennel license for Tammy Gimble for up to ten dogs on her property.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes and goes to council October eleventh. Next item is a public hearing for a preliminary plat known as Anderson Meadows. And Steve Stranland is the developer.
The request is that a public hearing is held and recommendation made to city council for the preliminary plat known as Anderson Meadows. This plat consists of ten buildable single-family residential lots. Of the proposed lot, one is, one lot is the minimum acreage of two acres. The average lot size in this proposed plat is three point seven eight five acres, which exceeds our average of two point five acres per lot. Therefore, all lots meet city code requirements. For the park dedication, the parks commission will be reviewing the plat on the October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting to make a recommendation of park land or park fees. Staff recommends cash in lieu of land, since there is an undeveloped park within the Oakbrook Acres plat adjacent to this lot. The park dedication fee is determined by five percent of the fair market value of the undeveloped land, not to exceed two thousand dollars per acre. Staff is working with the property owner to determine the amount required for park dedication fees, which will need to be paid prior to the release of the final plat for filing with Anoka County. Street access. In two thousand and three, city council approved the plat for Oakbrook Acres. Staff has attached the sketch plan in the final plat for Oakbrook Acres, which details that Gia Street was intended to extend to the north when the land was developed. Therefore, as part of the Oakbrook Acres development, a temporary cul-de-sac was constructed, constructed as shown on attachment four and five. As part of City Code, Chapter sixty-six, Section sixty-six dash one-six-four Streets, permanent cul-de-sacs lengths over five hundred feet require a variance. There are residents living in the Oakbrook Acres subdivision that do not support Gia Street being extended to the north and would rather see a new cul-de-sac from Durant Street to access Anderson Meadows. The fire chief and public works manager reviewed the concerns and have the following comments. Nate Ashford, the public works manager, is in support of the subdivision as proposed with no comments on the plat. Mark DeSharm, the fire chief, is in support of the plat as proposed, noting that the access to Durant Street is necessary from a safety standpoint. This can be seen in his statement dated September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, in attachment six. The Anoka County Highway Department reviewed this plat as well, and the preliminary plat was submitted for review on September second, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, staff has not received county comments, however, the developer is required to comply with Anoka County comments and requirements. Staff requests that the commission hold a public hearing, discuss and recommend approval of the preliminary plat known as Anderson Meadows with the conditions set forth in the attached resolution.
Again, this is a public hearing, so I invite anyone from the public who'd like to address this topic to come into the mic stating name and address.
This is Casey and Holly Riley, we live at two-one-zero-five-two Gia Street. And I just wanted to express the concerns from seven of the ten households on our street. They don't, they don't want.
Excuse me, one moment, one. Could we not have conversation in the back that is interfering with our ability to hear the topic being addressed, please? Thank you.
Seven of the ten households on our street don't want the street to go through because they moved into that street because of the cul-de-sac, and we didn't know that it was proposed to go through. So I just wanted to express that concern. That nobody has a problem with the development, but we wanted our cul-de-sac part of the reason that we moved in. And this is Holly.
Part of the reason why all of us on Gia Street like the cul-de-sac is because we all have kids that range from under one, you know, all the way up to seventeen still in the house. And it's a rural area, the kids are often out in the street riding their bikes, going on walks, walking the dog, playing on their hoverboards. And currently now, we don't have a lot of traffic on our road where there is a lot of children playing. Everybody that lives on our street respects the fact that our kids are out there living an active life, and they slow down. However, people who aren't familiar with the development, who don't know it's a cul-de-sac if they pull in, they will not respect the fact that there's children out there. And unfortunately, we have had a lot of close calls. And then the second reason why I'm not for the through street is currently now there's one in and out of the neighborhood. It's not a very big neighborhood, so there's not like lots of traffic, but it's good security. Whenever someone pulls into the neighborhood, they have to leave the same way. So if there's a suspicious vehicle, you can get a look at it twice, going into the neighborhood and coming out. And usually when people are casing a neighborhood and they see there's only one in and out, a lot of times they'll leave the neighborhood without causing any issues there. So I understand, you know, we're a growing city, and I'm not against the neighborhood itself, it's just the through street. And was the park, did you say something about the park? I didn't hear that.
It was just noted in the staff report that there is, there is undeveloped parkland just to the south of where this subdivision will be going in, at the north of. So if you look on, on this, it's
Right.
Lots one, two, and twelve of the Oakbrook Acres.
So that would not go to the new community, right?
So it's all part of the same neighborhood is what it would be considered. Just because the subdivisions are separate doesn't mean that.
Right, I'm saying it would still be considered park.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I do know that in the history of the universe, there's never been people living on a cul-de-sac that wanted it to continue to a new street and an adjacent development. It's one of the unfortunate facts of development that for, generally for safety of the development, like fire access. It's, it's very difficult to try and route when you have that alignment and an access to figure something else out that makes it difficult for fire and rescue to respond to a new development. Plus, the other factor is shoveling in the winter, or plowing, rather. So that, I've never seen it where the neighbors are real thrilled about a street going through, and it's often the reasons cited, which are legitimate. Children playing. Like the privacy of the cul-de-sac, thought that's what you were buying into. But that's unfortunately, a lot of things happen with developments that are not what we expected, including in my own property. Anyway, that's my soliloquiance cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, we have had discussions in the past with other developments regarding cul-de-sacs, and they've been fairly in-depth when it comes to, as you said, fire safety and snow removal. And it's very rare that a cul-de-sac is allowed to exist permanently in a development. I feel that we always see them constructed when it's the first phase of a development. And then the latter phases compel us to consider the ramifications of not extending a street. And this is a prime example of that, where the fire chief has weighed in to make a concrete argument for the street continuing for the light safety of those living within the houses. It's unfortunate, because I understand the other safety aspect and the security and the feeling of the security that a cul-de-sac community brings.
I, I agree, I totally understand the residents wanting their cul-de-sac. But as most of you who listen and watch planning commission meetings will know, I will always side on the side of the fire chief. And if he says he's okay with it, I'm okay with it. In this case, he's saying it should not be, so I can't go against that, public safety.
Any other issues aside from the cul-de-sac?
We all want our privacy, it's, it's fading away, there's no way to stop it. You know, the one, I live less than a mile from Viking Preserve. And we watched them come in and, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-nine homes. When I first started, I thought, boy, this is a, this is a mistake. We're gonna have all this traffic, we have traffic. But those are, I walk up on that road once, twice, three times a week, and they're some of the greatest neighbors I've had, living out here for forty-five years. So I understand you want your privacy. The good with the bad comes out of it, so. And that's just my two cents.
Yeah, it's something I just wanted to say too, at a, on a staff point. What we do, if there's a cul-de-sac that's temporary and eventually it's going to go through, there's a sign placed there. And there was one here at some point, I don't know if it is anymore. Those are always signs that disappear. But as developments come in and if we know they're going to extend that cul-de-sac, we do put signs there stating that it will go through at some point as well.
I don't think I've seen one of those signs, but that's a good idea.
They're there.
I had closed the public hearing, but did you have, can we open it if you have a pertinent point? Could you please come into the mic? State your name and address.
I'm not familiar with this particular area, but I've lived in the area of Coon Lake and East Bethel for
And your name is?
Forty years. Kathleen Ziem. And it's just my understanding that when people buy a house in a cul-de-sac, they usually pay high bucks for that, I would think. It's, it's a more expensive piece of property than just a plotted-out piece of property. And the other question that I was wondering is, is wouldn't the fire chiefs have been involved in that planning of that part of, of the roads and what was safe for individuals and for the public safety?
They were, that's why this was approved as a temporary cul-de-sac in the initial subdivision.
Okay, so whoever bought the cul-de-sac houses knew that it was a temporary thing, is that right?
They, if they purchased from another individual, so say they purchased from the initial subdivision, they may have been aware. they may have been aware if they had been involved. However, anyone purchasing a house that had been lived in by another, it may or may not have... Like, we see pretty common, a lot of these documents are not passed along to the new owners or... I don't know of very many times when residents are this active in planning commission. Like, this is the fullest I've seen this room for a planning commission meeting since I started here. So there is a good chance that a lot of the residents just didn't know how it was approved because they wouldn't have owned the lots at the time, so why, they wouldn't necessarily have been interested.
So that's not information that should be passed on?
Oh, no, it is. It absolutely is. And it's readily available at City Hall. Like, we very much encourage people to ask the city about properties before they purchase them so that we can let people know if anything is there that they should know. And this is also public documentation with the county as well.
I'd like to touch on that because I completely understand your point on that. And if we take today's housing market, people are walking through, they're looking at a purchase of two, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars and they're taking a forty-five-minute glimpse and they're putting a price on something at that amount of money. There isn't a real estate agent out there that is required, that I'm aware of, that has to tell you, you can't put a six-foot fence in your front yard. You can't plan on this cul-de-sac being here the rest of your life. None of that stuff is required to tell anybody. It's a sad thing because there's a lot of people that move to a nice area or a different area looking for those. Hey, we found a beautiful, quiet cul-de-sac. Hey, we're on lakefront. And now I've got a newer home coming in next door to me, right on top of me. Hey, I've got, you know, swampland, DNR land surrounding me. Nobody's required to tell you all of those rules and regulations of the cities. I think it's today's technology. I think we should be starting to figure out a way to do that because there's a lot of people like it burned that way.
Like my two-story house that has a three-story between me and the lake.
Sure. Yeah, it's a...
I just wanted to make that...
Thank you. Any other comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Carrington Development Anderson Meadows, East Bethel.
On a favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes. Goes to Council October eleventh. Next item, public hearing for zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments.
So staff is requesting that Planning Commission hold a public hearing for Appendix A zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments. Approximately 1,000 public hearing notices were mailed to the property owners whose affected property is affected by the proposed code and zoning changes. As part of the public hearing notice, there was a map showing the zoning changes and a link to the City of East Bethel website in which a draft of the text changes on the map are available for review. There's also a copy of the changes available for review at City Hall. This past week, staff has received calls and emails from approximately forty property owners that I would like to update. Since the publication of this packet, I have received just shy of 100 phone calls. Of that, I had twenty-five today. The property owners all had very specific questions. Initially, it was requesting information on how this will affect their taxes. The information that is that it won't. The county determines the taxes. It's not based on zoning. In case there's anyone, I'm just gonna go through the questions in case there are people in the audience who need those answers. And another question was, my property is going from R1 residential to CL Coon Lake residential. How does that affect my property? So City Council has determined that these smaller lots in what will soon be the Coon Lake Residential District, they want to acknowledge that because we've had an abundance of variance requests for setback reductions in these areas. So the only change to the Coon Lake zoning district from R1 is that the setback will change from ten feet to seven. So say you need to update your septic system. That is a side yard that requirement of ten feet. So you'd be able to put it at seven feet, which would allow you to update your septic system. A lot of this area has a very unique challenge in the placement of wells. And as, like, due to the septic setback requirements from wells being a hundred feet to a shallow well or fifty feet to a deep well, that side yard setback can completely impact whether or not a house remains livable. And the city wants to work with residents to help keep them in these houses, keep these houses inhabited. So then we also have, you know, somebody wanting to put a deck on their house. We've seen that countless times in the three years that I've been here. So it's reasonable to want to put a deck on your house. And so we've approved, I want to say, you know, eight of those in the last three years. So that is what the Coon Lake Residential Zoning District will do for residents. Some of those R1 properties that you see up there are also going to be rezoned to rural residential. What that means is that instead of having a minimum lot size of ten acres for those properties, they'll now be able to subdivide at a higher density. So they'll be able to have, subdivide their property into a minimum of two-acre lots with an overall density of two and a half. So that benefits those property owners as well. Those properties, they're all being rezoned as an update to the 2040 comp plan, which has been a talk at the city since 2017. City has been working to amend the code and zoning in compliance with this plan. But when Met Council determined that sewer and water is not going to be available in the Coon Lake Beach area, that whole southern portion of the R1 needed to change. City Council reviewed and discussed the amendments at the September seventh, 2021 work session and at the September thirteenth, 2021 regular meeting. City Council supports the amendments to the zoning code and the zoning map. The changes to the official zoning map are the R1 to rural residential and R1 to CL Coon Lake residential. All of the zoning changes occur east of Highway 65 and south of Viking Boulevard. The changes to the zoning code, the most notable change is the creation of the Coon Lake Residential District. These are properties that were previously zoned R1 and the only changes are the side yard setback from ten to seven feet. And a minimum lot size without sewer and water is reduced from ten acres to two acres, which only pertains to new residential developments. Previously, additions to commercial buildings greater than 10% of the existing building footprint required a site plan review in front of the Planning Commission and City Council meetings. The code will now require additions greater than 25% to require a site plan review. Car washes are now allowed within all business districts as a conditional use. Brewery and taprooms are permitted in all business districts. Previously, they were limited to light industrial. The business and industrial districts are required to have lighting in off-street parking areas with a minimum of .5-foot candle illumination. The mixed-use district, MXU, was created and adopted on March eighth, 2021, but was not incorporated into pertinent sections of the code. The amendments add mixed-use and Coon Lake throughout the zoning code. The new definition, or a new definition is added for non-residential uses in the residential district and sidewall height is redefined. Planned unit developments are now allowed within all residential and commercial districts and are required in the mixed-use district. City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, discuss and make a recommendation of approval to City Council of Ordinance 2021-6, amending Appendix A zoning and the zoning changes to the official City of East Bethel zoning map.
And with that, we open the public hearing. Please come in the mic if you have anything to say, stating name and address.
I'm Joshua. I'm at thirty-six, thirty-three, twenty-three, twenty-one, oh, one, seventeen. And just, I'm not very eloquent with any of this. But I was just, I'm looking back at some of my abstract properties here and I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with, like, it's the Hague Conference on Private International Law. Just when you're looking at, like, the global economies and things. And, but the relevance here is like, just it's, this was concluded July fifth, 2006. And I've gotten a new, it's like a client relationship notice that was just updated through the, like, Ameritrade thing. That was just from the spring. And it involves, like, these intermediaries. But it's pretty much just the, I'll try to be brief, but the state's signatory to the President Convention, aware of the urgent practical need in large and growing global financial market, just in as far as, like, what you're talking about, the whole housing market, just to not have another bubble, in large and growing global financial market to provide legal certainty and predictability as to the law applicable to securities that are now commonly held through clearing and settlement systems or other intermediaries, conscious of the importance of reducing legal risk, systematic risk, and associated costs in relation to cross-border transactions involving securities held within intermediary so as to facilitate the international flow of capital and access to capital markets, designed to establish common provisions on the law applicable to securities held within intermediary, beneficial to states at all levels of economic development, recognizing that the place of relevant intermediary approach, and then it's like, or PRMA, it's like all capitals, P-R-I-M-A, as determined by account agreements with intermediaries, provides the necessary legal certainty and predictability at resolve to conclude convention to this effect and agreed upon the following. And so it's the side, or the little footnote. The convention, including related materials, is accessible on the website of the Hague Convention. Private International Law, it's www.hcch.net. Under Conventions, for the full story of the convention, see Hague Conference on Private International Law. Proceedings of the nineteenth session, 2002, it's home to insecurities. And so that went into effect in July, one of 2002. And I mean, I got, there's other issues back going on in 2002. But as far as, like, your torrents deeds, whether you got a certificate of possessory title or a certificate of title, it's, we're coming up to that twenty-year mark. But for a lot of these old abstract properties, if you don't have a clear forty years, there's still these issues that can be raised. And so it's a fairly brief summary. I mean, it's nine pages. There's five chapters, twenty-four articles. And it's fairly concise. There's, you know, like, the interpretation of this convention.
Excuse me, but...
Well, it's just for, with this beach here, the Coon Lake Beach area, when, if you're rezoning or the, you know, kind of the bonding, because I know I just looked at the budget there and there was, you know, like, six hundred, just right around six hundred thousand on both sides of what was going towards the principal and towards the interest. So if you're looking at, like, 1.2 million, just on top of, you know, if you only got a budget of six years, that's twenty percent, that's just going to this financing stuff for, you know, a fairly small community. And I don't know if you're familiar with, like, back in nineteen fifty-seven, when it already gone to the Supreme Court.
I'm failing to understand what you're...
It's not really, it's just, to make mention, because just by simply stating of your choice, because it's a choice of law, of what you want to be governed by. And so, like, for these different securities or how you're financing it, just by...
How does this apply to the zoning changes that we're discussing?
The, it's, the, not zoning so much, the, well, okay, the, there's sixteen hundred and forty-one little lots on Coon Lake. They used to each be, they were part of a land swap. So, and there was all this, they did a consolidation of all the school and grant trust and all these railroads. The railroad stopped right over in, or by Stacy. And so it jumps the, between, like, Shisago County is completely different congressional district. So that's different legislation. It's a different forum.
So if I understand you correctly, this doesn't have anything to do with what we're discussing here other than peripherally in terms of government?
Well, it's for, to preserve, to make people aware of what they're getting into for, if they're doing, like, buying a house or what they're spending on the house and where that funding is coming from or, like, predatory lending type of things or where everything is just completely automated.
Those are not issues that are under discussion here?
No, I get that. I just was just trying to throw something out because I haven't been here for a long time and I just hate to disappoint and not even come and say anything. So I can, I'll let you go back. But there's just a lot of, you know, older things. And when you're talking about, like, the, like, from the history of the universe, you know, or try not to, like, throw stones. And so there's the change in the law convention. And so other, there's like the old law that will still be in effect. It's how you choose the new law. So it's like, if you're on Old Testament versus New Testament or type of the thing, you know, it's like, I don't know. But it's, I'm just saying, there's, you know, like, securities, if it's a Federal Reserve note, you know, or what do you... Because there's bonds that you guys got going. And I haven't been up here for a while, so just saying, there's...
Coming out at once.
Well, if you're gonna make a own separate zone, is where I was getting at. If it was gonna be like a separate classification, it's like Coon Lake, you know, it's like, then it should be, you know, there's a lot of history. You don't gotta really start from scratch. That's all I'm saying.
Carry on.
Tough act to follow. Anybody else?
Just to that, in terms of historical precedent, go ahead. Move your way to the podium and fill a time. I think it's important to note that by recognizing the unique nature of this district through this proposal, we're actually going to make things a bit easier from my stance on the Planning Commission to work with those property owners to make sure that some of those things that were mentioned by city staff are already considered, that they don't have to come to the Planning Commission for a variance request for wells and such. Please go ahead. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Wells and I live at thirty-four oh five Edmar Lane Northeast. And I just have two questions. So our property is right up here. You can see Edmar there. We're just on the other side. We're across the street from the lake. And so our property is changing from R1, yeah, R1 to RR, I guess. And you had mentioned that it, by changing to rural residential, it makes the minimum lot size two acres versus ten acres for R1? Okay, I thought that was opposite, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, a lot of the lots in this area were subdivided before that zoning requirement took place. So they're considered legal non-conforming lots.
But with the, so with the rural residential zoning, it is a two-acre minimum?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my second question is about how it was decided that the properties, that, I mean, most of the properties are on the lake that are in this district. But then on Breezy Point, between Breezy or between Edmar Lane and Viking, those are gonna be Coon Lake and then that other neighborhood to the east is not, I'm sorry, to the west is not? Like, what was the determining point for that being the zoning versus?
The lot size average?
Oh, okay. Okay, so it was not about lakefront. It's about lot size average currently in those developments? Okay, thank you.
My name's Arnie Wicker. I live at thirty-nine forty Breezy Point. I just have a couple of questions. We put in the city sewer and water, how long ago?
Too long.
Huh?
Too long.
Twenty-ten?
Twenty-ten, twenty-eleven.
So we've got all this small lot sizes out here. Can you update? I'm just curious. Can you update us on, you know, you're putting in the development on twenty-two and sixty-five on the corner. I'm assuming that's gonna get city sewer and water?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And then if we come across, are you gonna, you know, run city sewer and water since we have these issues out there or not?
I'm not an expert on it.
I think it became too problematic and costly to do that, so they scrapped that plan. But if you wanted...
The Met Council is the one who determines if the city can expand the sewer and water and they determined that at this time...
Who does that? I'm sorry.
The Metropolitan Council. So with them overseeing it, they did determine that at this time it's not feasible to move city sewer and water outside of the municipal service area, which is confined to the Highway 65 corridor.
Three-quarters of a mile to the east or west of...
Three-quarters of a mile?
Correct.
All right. That, I've got a couple of other questions. That is interesting because that must have cost a lot of money to put in.
You don't want to go there tonight.
Well, I just thought about that. I thought, you know, that's gotta cost a lot of money and if you're not hooked up to hardly anything...
There's some gaps and, you know, East Bethel has some...
There's a plan.
Developed areas.
There is a plan. Okay, can you share?
I'm not on a plan.
Does anyone know the plan?
Not tonight. There's not a time.
Oh, okay, so you can't share? Oh, okay, so you can't share tonight?
It's actually public information, so it's, it's out there.
So presently, the plan is up and down Highway 65. Uh, the 2030 service area are on the north and south ends.
Okay.
And then the 2040 service area that was recently approved goes from just north of 221st, which is the street out here, to just south of 209th. Our city engineer has worked on feasibility studies for, um, lift stations along that area, so that one development is encouraging the expansion, that we will be ready for it.
Okay, so there's a 2030 and a 2040 plan?
Yep, there are two separate ones, and then we'll continue updating it every 10 years, per Met Council's requirements.
Okay. Didn't answer the financial piece, but I suppose you don't wanna, okay.
I, I don't actually know it, I'm, I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Fiore, I live at 194 Ivy Road in, uh, Coon Lake Beach. I just wanna clarify the, uh, the water and sewer systems. They were put in, the, the Met Council came up with a, by the way, there are three ways of zoning. There's a city zoning, there's a variance zoning, and there's a Met Council zoning. The Met Council zoning is the most powerful of all, except for the courts. And if the Met Council steps in, you have nothing to say with it. The water and sewer came in, because in 2006, the Met Council submitted a study that showed tremendous growth in East Bethel. Six months later, the market collapsed, and that whole plan went south. But the Met Council never changed that, and the water and sewer system was built on that study. So the reason why your taxes are as high as they are, and because the usage is so low, is because the Met Council, at that time, would not back down. Since then, they have, to some degree, but nowhere near enough, to reduce the burden that this water and sewer system has caused to this community. So I just wanna bring that up, as you look at these changes. And you have to realize, that I think the point Josh tried to make is the demography of population is changing. The cities are dying, and as the cities die, people need places to live. And they're coming into the suburbs and the outer suburbs. So we're, we're right now, the northern ring of the suburbia development. The next step after us is Shisago County, what have you. If we have large acre zoning, the Met Council will not hesitate to step in and reduce that. And if they step in, they could take, they can take 10 acre, 5 acre, 2 acre, 1 acre, quarter acre, whatever zoning they want. And I think it's wise of this body, this commission today, to reduce these lot sizes to 2 and a, to 2 acres, because the pressure is gonna come. You can tell them, "Met Council, we're sitting on top of, top of it, leave us alone." And possibly, they may do that. So, I hope this passes, I think it's good for the community. It may raise our taxes, because, as everybody knows, housing development comes with, does not bring enough taxes to cover the services, but we'll try to offset with the industry they're bringing in. And Mr. Chairman, before the meeting is over, I'd like to point a personal privilege. Uh, I'd like to correct something you said, said that was wrong.
I'm sorry, I missed the point of...
Personal privilege. I raised my hand before you made the motion to accept the variance for gratitude farm. And there was an error in your statement, I'd like to clarify that before the meeting ends.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Bradley Harlan at 18465 Lake View Point. And I had a question, um, this Metropolitan Council, is that the Minneapolis City Council?
No.
No, the Met Council, it's this unelected, um, monstrosity that started, started out as, was supposed to, um, they had a real small purview of what they were gonna be involved in, and then they just became this expansive, more and more things that they seem to oversee.
So, how many counties do they cover?
It's the entire metro area.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how...
Seven county metro.
It's the seven county metro area, yes.
Oh, that's pretty big.
Yeah.
Then, changing the zoning along the lake and stuff, that looked like an opportunity to separate the two, the rural route and the other one to, to have the people on the lake get targeted for higher taxes, wouldn't it? And, you know...
I don't know how this reflects with taxes, actually.
Well, it'll definitely... Okay.
The county, the county determines the taxes, it's, it's not based on the city's decisions. It's based off of how they're assessed by the county assessor.
But they'll look at the two different zones and, and...
They, they even, they don't typically consider our zones. We've got many residential lots that they've deemed, uh, commercial lots, and they tax it based on that. If you look at, the tax designations are available, it's public data. If you go onto the county website, you can actually take a look at that. Uh, the county's tax, uh, they don't have a separate zoning in Anoka County for lake lots. It's all residential, it's like a R1, single-family resident, I think it's R1A on the county website. So they're all, your property has the same as probably every property in the city that people are living on.
Okay, so then, this, um, this area, this area, this area, this area, they'll keep the taxes the same, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And so...
So this, this area down here is all ag zone, like, the, the, it's gonna be zoned by the city as rural residential, but that's taxes agricultural, but the rest of everything, you know, north and west of that is all zoned residential.
So... The taxes between the purple and the beige there shouldn't make any difference, right?
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. You have to come to the microphone.
You still need to come to the mic, so...
I'm a business owner, but I live on the lake, and I've had that property for, since 1920. I'm right over, uh, by the that way.
Right around.
I'm, I'm Brian.
Okay, yeah.
Mabel, okay? We're on the lake, our taxes have gone ridiculous.
Can you state your name and address into the microphone, sorry?
My name's Jerry Torgerson Pocus. I live in the home on the lake, as you come off the south shore, it says Nelson. My dad has had the property since the twenties. Now, we're lakefront, but the people down among lake shore are lake view. They don't own, they, they buy, um, they buy pieces of property to put a dock on. And I've been to some of the, "How do you take care of the weeds?" Well, if we don't have weeds, we don't have fish, so, um, I just feel that you can't say that all of it's gonna be the same amount of taxes, because if you own 100 feet of a lake, your taxes are three times what somebody that's looking down the hill at the lake.
Lake shore taxes are always higher everywhere you go.
No.
Everywhere, it's, it's not just here, but I, I understand what you're saying.
So you can't say it's, um, relevant to anything in purple, it's gonna be taxed the same, because it isn't right.
The changes that are proposed will not impact how the county assesses taxes. That is what we're saying.
Okay, okay. And my one concern was, when you're going for residential or commercial residential, we have people that work from their home, cutting wood and selling it, in that area. That's where the, their business is. If you came 30 years ago, you had, um, the Minneapolis Stars sold lots, 25-foot lots. So it was so much down and so much a month. Now, if you build over by the, the Narrows, you have to have three of those lots to even have a well and septic on them. So, when you say, "Are you changing your just residential?", I know all this other stuff where the, where the people are mowing sod and stuff like that, what it is, but people, you don't wanna give them the wrong insight on it, that they're gonna, it's gonna cost less if you're out of the purple area. Because those people have to have three lots that were sold in the twenties, two, build one, three-bedroom home, because all of those were just single-car garages when they first came.
Right.
She was right on it, that's what I was trying to get at earlier, just that, because that's in Section 25, just that piece. And so that was your, all the original right-of-way and all that stuff, I mean, it was, it started on, on your guys' place, and then it follows in its, I mean, it splits right that subsection 12.
Can you state, state your name?
Oh, it's Joshua. So, um, yeah, and it's just, it goes back, like, you know, that, some of the old, there's, there's federal maritime laws and all the federal communication systems and all that stuff, but there's, the same outlots are right there. And so it goes back to, like, with Cedar Creek here, where there's the, the radio testing, you know, and, like, tracking different stuff. And then all the, those different slips were part of the, it's, it's like dogging, you know, it's like, how, your computer ports or something, it does go along, but, anyway, anyways. It's, it's, it's like ballot, that's what I was getting, you know, like, they're all the same laws. It's like, they don't just throw the Constitution just 'cause it's old, you know, the Declaration of Independence is still valid.
Any other comments? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So if there's nobody else, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, there is somebody else.
Sorry, I'm new to this, my name's Anna, I'm at 18465 Lake View Point Drive. So as I'm learning more and more about this, the purple section has wells. With this change in footage, is that for sewer and water to come in?
No.
So, the reason why it's from 10 to 7 is because these lots are so small, that every time someone needed a new well or a new septic, they had to come in and request a variance, because technically, legally, it was too close to the property line.
Gotcha, okay.
So this is amending that, so not as many people need to come in and ask for permission for something that is logical. So, because it's the only place it can go in terms of a variance. So we are reducing the threshold, or we're actually increasing the threshold for that variance, so people have more flexibility without having to come to City Hall for permission.
We're saving time and money.
Is that just for wells or for any kind of variance?
To, to just put, it's for any type of variance. To put it into perspective, in 2019, we had a resident who had to ask for a six-inch variance, because the surveyor was incorrect. Like, the, the lots are so old that it's hard for them to find pins. And so sometimes these surveys are not as correct as they would be on newer lots. So having to request that six-inch variance could've been avoided in that, like, with this.
That was my primary question, so thank you.
But believe it or not, this change is just to make life simpler for both staff and for residents in the Coon Lake area. So they can do things like put a garage where it can only fit, or a septic system where it can only work, that sort of thing. Okay, anybody else?
Sorry, I was just gonna share one thing. So I am a local, um, independent contract property assessor in Anoka County. So I just wanted to confirm what Erin is saying about the taxes, because I heard that on my street, too. People are like, "They just want taxes, they just want our taxes to go up." But the assessor doesn't, will not, I'm not the assessor for East Bethel, but the assessor is not gonna look at this zoning and say, "Okay, taxes are all going up in this zone." Your assessment is gonna be based on, just like it is now, the size of your lot, are you on the lake, are you off the, you know, it's, this is not gonna change the way your property is assessed, so I just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Closing the public hearing? And any further discussion?
I move to accept the changes as proposed to the city code.
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes, goes to council on October 11th. Next up is city reports. From our city liaison.
Hiding in the back corner. Good evening, everybody, I'm Suzanne Erkel, I'm a city council member, and I'm just gonna update you on a few things that the city has voted on in the last six, four to six weeks. Um, we've had a few dangerous dog hearings, um, so please keep your dogs on your property. The Midco TV streaming is now on Channel 77 and not Channel 10 anymore. So if you've looked for it and you haven't been able to find it, it's on number 77. We approved a law enforcement contract. Sand Hill Parkway, it, street name has changed all, it's gone all the way up, um, nearly to, like, 221st, or, and it'll probably end up going further in the future. We did reduce the speed limit on Edmar Lane to 20 miles per hour, so that's for, like, the whole thing. We're just going through a lot of other zoning codes and updating and modifying zoning, uh, which is, and ordinances, which is a nice thing to do. We did have a firefighter resign, we've gone through the 2022 budget. Minda is continuing to work to make 65 and 22 intersections safer, they're always looking for ideas. And if you have issues with that intersection, you can always go onto their website, Minda, and there's a place just for that, where you can make comments on it. We've eliminated the kennel license fee, we, and the most exciting thing is we've hired a company to analyze East Bethel regarding broadband. We're one step closer to getting broadband in East Bethel, which will make everybody's life easier in this age of technology. Does anybody have any questions?
You've been busy, thanks Suzanne.
Okay, thank you. Oh... We don't get money from the cable companies.
No.
Any other staff reports, comments? Did you want to make the comment before we adjourn?
I thought that I'd heard that, um, the contract with Gratitude Farms in East Bethel had been gamed? Is that true, Suzanne?
The contract? We did vote to cancel the ACO contract with Gratitude Farms, but they still have, and I love their kennel license, I think that's great, they have a breeding license and a horse IUP, but, and those are all great. But the ACO contract is over as of October 1st, and we will be using, um...
Over 15, 30 days.
I know, but I think she, she did a request to have it...
But we don't have a replacement yet, so...
Yeah, and we're working on, um, North Metro Animal Control.
I just wondered, when I, Mr. Chairman, that, in your, that you said the Gratitude Farms is animal control, and that may await your decision on the variance. I just wanted to point out that that will no longer be the case.
Right. No, it didn't actually weigh in my decision, but it was just another point I was raising as to credibility for what she was requesting. That has done this.
Well, at minimum, two days left, so it is current. Maybe seventeen, we'll see. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.